And we have, we have the debates since, uh, since I'm aware of the city council operating recently is, I think it's extremely rare that we put in a part of supervision, um, in legislation before the council.
So Mr. Messi, whenever we make changes to the city charter, we do it by ordinance?
Um, changes to the charter can only be made when you put it to the vote of the people. So, and that's what we did last year. We went through many proposed charter changes. And each of those amendments to the, or proposed amendments were passed by resolution. So maybe that's a little confusing because the manner by which council acts to refer a proposed charter amendment to the people is also through a resolution. And so charter amendments are adopted by resolution. But they're not effective until the vote of the people. So that the resolution itself, all it does is create that administrative process that says, okay, this next election, there's going to be a local question submitted to the people on a potential charter amendment. And we had, I think, six or seven amendments and all but one were adopted.
Yes.
So I think the people thought you all did a good job with your proposed amendments. But one related to the term of service contract for the city manager, that was the one that was voted down. So everything else passed, including the one that said we're taking of the, uh, the list of departments out of the charter. And now we're putting it into the, clearly into the ambit of the city council. It's your authority to create departments, to uncreate departments, to combine, uh, departments and things of that nature. Whereas before it was very cumbersome. You know, if we wanted to reduce or eliminate the health department, uh, from the charter, we would have had to propose an amendment just to reduce or remove the health department. So instead of doing that, what the charter amendment said was, we're not, we're going to remove all of them, but we're going to vest that authority in the council. So the people obviously, uh, that was a good idea, trusting you, obviously to exercise your authority properly. And now, and I think it would be a good thing since we don't have the departments listed in the charter, we should list them somewhere and list them in a place that is fairly permanent. And so that's why proposing it as an ordinance, not just as an org chart. Because org charts are not legislative, I think. I think they are more administrative. So, uh, this is much more general than org charts, Mayor. This is just like setting the table. And then how you want to subdivide departments and you have those conversations recently about, um, different ways of organizing the public works department. This doesn't get into that. This just says, um, that there are ten departments and it gives the city manager the authority temporarily to establish divisions within departments. But then the city manager needs to bring forward to a council approval. And I think you could do that by an order that has an org chart attached to it. And then by, and so that would not be deemed legislative, Mayor. That's would be deemed administrative. And what that means is it's not going to be as permanent as this ordinance. And it could be, uh, reconsidered any council meeting. You could put that back on the agenda and, you know, work on the org chart, uh, until everyone's comfortable. So I think this is just the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I think it gives a lot of good, uh, outline to the, um, department, uh, division or the department, uh, means by which the city affects its, uh, government or carries through on its government responsibilities. And then, um, the city manager can work with council, uh, on adopting a final, uh, org chart. And that would be, uh, very timely as we go forward with the budget adoption process there. To make sure that we're all comfortable with what the org chart looks like so that everything gets funded in, uh, in the right place and, and, yes. And then when you go forward with adopting the budget, you'll have your org chart and your budget. And, and again, that's more administrative. So that's the everyday stuff. It's not subject to a referendum. It's not subject to the vote of the people. But potentially this ordinance could be subject, you know, when you adopt it, just like any other ordinance. It would be subject to the exercising the referendum authority. That's a long-winded answer to one simple question. But I think me by the word.
If there were some, uh, opportunities for, for hiring that, that extra people for one of the departments of public works, uh, you know, um, not hiring those people that are tied along to, you know, street guys, ladder guys, and street guys. That's where we would also identify an org chart for the budget.
Yes. I think the org chart and the budget goes hand in hand. So if you want to expand a particular part of public works and create more, uh, hiring authority uh, to fill a need that's not being met with current staffing, definitely put that into the budget of the payroll section and also, you know, indicate on the org chart. But I think org chart, do we go down to individual employees? I don't think so. I think we're just looking at just the number of department directors and supervisors, right?
Correct. And then just the number of staff.
And then the number of staff. So.
It, yeah. Not identifying like the two or the number.
Right.
Because I did, I did it.
Right. And so, and that's one of the, uh, department director, um, responsibilities that's, uh, written into this proposed ordinance. Is that department directors, uh, and I pulled this out of one of the other cities that was empty. Says that one of their big responsibilities is to prepare budgets for their departments, including their staffing, their proposed staffing. And that has to be done every year as part of the budget process. But it goes through, obviously, the city manager, city manager reasons, shares it with council and, you know, you have your set sections on that.
Uh, because in the past, um, as mayor and as, as council, uh, here and down, so. It was so easy to remove those, those names that was from the org chart because of budget issues.
Okay.
From city managers in the past. Now, you know, concerned that, you know, we needed to either freeze positions or, you know, even though they still, they would still be on there.
Uh-huh.
But or completely remove them from budget staff.
Right. And we've done it both ways. I think we'd like to keep the positions there, but put a higher freeze to create a little bit of additional flexibility.
But if it freezes, the money's still there.
The, uh, but it's frozen until council approves.
Okay.
There. And so that's what a freeze needs is, is being staffed and potentially the money is there. But we look and see how revenues are coming in and then we say, okay, you can go ahead and hire. So that, uh, the higher freezes is a method by which the city council will be absolutely in the loop on pulling those triggers before, you know, individuals are hired.
Yeah, because, uh, I think of a trade position that I have frozen in, a lumberjack. Is that true, Mr. Trump? Pretty much, yes. So, well, you don't have to be a new, a new man now.
Right. I mean, every budget year you can impose a freeze if that's what the desire of city council is. So, uh, but if, if it looks like, uh, there's no name for it, then that's something else that.
Yeah, the street department used to be twenty-three employees.
And they're doing the job of twenty-three?
Uh, no.
These are supermen?
No, they're not supermen. On a good day, they're, they're, yeah. So, so it's, that's why, that's why when, when Mr. Trump, when he had, uh, sees work on the streets and, and I've explained it to him that, you know, some of his work is not done, you know, occasionally, at a time, coming back. It's, it's, it's pretty hard for them going to do the work when, uh, half of the employees are no longer here.
Right.
So, so they're, they're, you know, then when, like I said, on a good day, it would be ninety. Because it could be off for no reason or nothing or something. So, so those are the, I was talking to you about, those are the things that, that happen and, and, uh, kind of puts a string on it. And I know you get, you get frustrated. Talk, talk to me about that. That's what I mean. This is, this is the easiest way to explain it, that, uh, there were twenty-three employees. That's why a lot of the work, paving was done, paving and sidewalks were not created. And that started, and that started. You know, if, if there were four more employees, my idea, and I don't know if I'm going out of practice or anything, but, uh, if there were more, four more employees on the street department, those four could be trained for sidewalks and they'd go on sidewalks and the rest would be paid instead of stopping a paving and then going to sidewalks. And that's why, that's why it takes so long for the jobs to be, uh, completed and, and, and and harder to schedule and to make a list. And you have to, remember we talked about the list? Well, they're working in, in Riberia now. But this should have been working in Riberia almost a year ago. But then again, COVID kind of away. But, uh, that list, we're still working on the list from twenty-nineteen. So, you know, uh, they're going to be jumping, uh, when they jump, after finishing that job, they'll jump to the alley street. But then we're a year behind on sidewalks. So, you know, I, I talked to the supervisor in the streets and he goes, you know, how can we define that?
Can I ask you another question? You got comment about there. Does the city, when they, when they get a grant to do some, uh, that street work of paving and sidewalks, do they have to, uh, how, uh, they just pay to guidelines?
It depends upon the source of the grant. If the grant, uh, even if, uh, the grant is awarded by state agencies, a lot of times those state agencies are just parsing out federal dollars that get funded, uh, let's say by different highway appropriations and things like that at the federal level. So anytime we spend federal dollars, we have to provide a state payment.
So you can't get the people doing sidewalks and then do the paving too, because it's too dangerous.
I didn't know that that is. I, I didn't know that answer, but, uh, I would say that if it's federal dollars, we would, um, uh, bid it out. It's very clear we're bidding, you know, federal, like.
C G grant.
Always federal dollars.
Remember, we had never bid it out sidewalks, street. It's that influence. When we've been out a paving job, it's, it's either the Polonia or the CPBD money or any grant. Uh, it always goes to the work company. And that never goes to the city. And that, because I, I don't think we can spend a certain amount of dollars as a city. Once, matter of fact, correct me if I'm wrong, if you go past a certain amount of dollars, you cannot do it in the city. It has to be bid enough.
Right. Right. And that, that number is tagged to, uh, the consumer price index. So every year, it, it is for different projects. So you have a certain limit for streets and then a different limit for, uh, sewer and water. So you can do more in-house with water and sewer than you can with street.
But, uh, but, uh, I've never seen any, any sidewalks bid it out.
Yes, also more real work, you know, for the work to a contractor. The contractor will be the responsible party for the biggest picking recognition.
Right. And it's so that.
Not this year.
It, it's very, very, whenever we bid something like that out, it's, it's part of the big documents. And that's also been, anyways, where I think we're getting a little, but I, I, if I could be, um, recognized just a little bit, Mayor, I would propose and see that there's something here that really is reflective of an earlier version of this document, which is section two fifteen. It says department directors additional duties and conditions. And B says engineering transportation directors shall be superintendent of streets. But I would just, I propose to remove that there. What that means is we don't have to excel out in this, our, kind of superintendent of streets. It's, that would get defaulted over to the org chart. So I'll just remove that so the, with the consent of council. Uh, so that the ordinance, if you decide to move forward with consideration of it tonight, I'll just have that removed when we vote on it tonight.
Yeah. And I just say one thing to the student. The only money that we can do in-house is government. Every time we, every time we go up for a grant, the city doesn't work on that budget. It's always due. And I know.
One more question.
You can give it a short answer.
All right. Yes or no? I'll answer yes.
There's ten ordinance here. Will they apply to the same, for the city bylaws or can any department have to apply?
Uh, again, that would be, uh, something that city council can decide. It's not explicitly stated in this ordinance, but every department is subject to the H R being that is called. Certain departments have their own, what they call, uh, S O Gs, or standard operating guidelines or standard operating procedures, things like that. And department directors adopt those. And those are usually much more specific. Uh, it relates to operational, uh, you know, requirements and procedures and things like that.
And the reason I'm asking, because of housing authority, they have to plan for the HUD by the city.
Right.
They have to.
Right. This, this would not be inconsistent with that. I think when we, um, hire the N H A director, we always say the first thing N H A director you're hiring is you have to comply with, uh, regulations. That's clear. And you have to make sure, just like, uh, public works director. Um, if you, if you wanted, we could put that in there because, for example, it says under other duties, it says department, you know, that the public works is responsible for environmental permits. You could put it under there, that the N H A director or the housing authority executive director is responsible for compliance with all HUD regulations. And if that.
Yes, because when they get audited, they, they comply with HUD regulations and the housing authority.
Right.
And the auditor always has to propose items.
But they always present it to the commission.
Um, we could put that in this ordinance to, if, if, if that's the, um. If, if that's your motion, or I can put that in there. And I'll have that amended by the time we consider tonight to say that, uh, N H A executive director is responsible for compliance of all housing authority, uh, HUD regulations.
Yes. Yes.
Make that a.
Yes. First, Mayor, I mean, um, Mr. Messi, so, um, I was just thinking about, if, uh, our M I S, would they need a certain department, part of the A department?
They're not listed as one of the ten. Okay. So, and this is, again, is a question, does the M I S department, is it a department or is, what is it? And so how, um, this ordinance proposes to address that situation there, um, where you have specialized employees that are not themselves part of a separate department, then they're under, directly under the authority and supervision of the city manager. Because they're dogs and cats. Somebody has to be watching over them and that's the city manager. And anytime though that the city manager says that, um, they're big enough and they should be their own department, then you can propose that and bring it back to city council and say, we should have, instead of ten, we should have eleven departments. And we'll make that a separate department. But it's, as it stands right now, we're not, uh, proposing that. And so the, uh, the head of the M I S department as the director is the city manager. So all the director responsibilities fall on the city manager. But again, there is authority in this ordinance that directors can designate, um, subordinate individuals to, uh, carry out, you know, some of their responsibilities and, you know, tasks that might, so city manager just tasks the M I S manager with the authority and the responsibility to manage the city's I T department.
You're right, because, uh, they work for every department.
Right.
They don't, you know, like streets works for streets. They work for every department. So they expect they, you direct them to city manager. One that told me that a long time ago was, uh, Mr. Trump.
Right.
Because they work for, for every city department in the city.
Right. But that's why when you do your budget, when it comes to the administration department, you're putting those people under the administration department for budget purposes.
Yeah.
Things like that. Just clear.
Thank you. Um, Michael, tell me a little bit or clarify a little bit about the, um, some section two department heads that we're talking about right now. And it says here on C, it says, none of the merit protections of the legal school, so now manual or related regulations shall, uh, apply to these officers except that we go for reduction in rank. Can we clarify that or talk a little bit about that? So it's on section two?
Yeah, section two dash, is that course?
Department heads, divisions of department heads, branded officers.
Two fourteen.
And two fourteen.
Two fourteen C.
C.
Okay, so, section two fourteen C, I have all the department directors charter.
The chapter eight administration.
Uh-huh. Oh, oh, of the, um, you're referring to the charter, section eight?
Yeah.
On the charter. Okay. And I attached that as, um, just support, uh, documentation so that the council can orient themselves to what the new charter reads. And so that is the charter. Obviously, the charter is not subject to being considered and revised. That is what it is, um, as a result of the charter.
Is that going to be merit protection?
Yes, there is no merit protection. That's a simple clarification. What, right. What the charter, uh, now says, which is, as adopted by the, um, people, is this is that they are subject to, uh, that, that can be removed. And, and again, when we, when we discussed this, um, last year, Mayor, I offered my opinion in public that that change would not affect current department directors because, um, public employees have property rights in their employment. And so when you change things, it's really changing prospectively. And you don't change it retroactive to people who are already hired. And so, um, like if the council appoints a new finance director tonight, that would be the first hire under that provision. And so the new directors hired from here forward will not have merit protection. And what the charter says is that they're to be hired, removed, promoted and terminated, uh, by the city manager, subject to consent and approval by the city council and also subject to advisory rights of appeal. And then advisory right of appeal means that they could go ahead and file an appeal with the appeals commission and the appeals commission could go ahead and hear the matter. But whatever the appeals commission decides would be advisory. And so whatever they decided, we would then bring that decision back to council. And it would be council's determination at that point whether to accept the recommendation of the appeals commission or not. And then, um, everything is vested right in the city council. So this again is part of the administrative authority that city council is exercising. This is a big, big-ish change because in the past it was like, oh, city manager, you know, we're not going to make any, um, input onto city manager decisions on how they. City managers have been hired, even firing and demoting or removing or anything like that. And if there are any questions, it's solely to the appeals commission. And city council out of the picture on that. That change. Now city council is part of the administrative process when it comes to department directors, but only department directors.
So the existing, um, department heads or grandpa, grandfather names?
The current ones.
The current ones.
Right.
Could have technically that.
Right.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Except for the two officers that work directly for appeals, Mayor. That's, that's stupid. And, uh, when you hire a city manager, also the city manager. So we work at will. The charter wasn't changed on that. We're at will, but the protection for at will, and so, uh, department directors are also at will.
There's a will of the people.
Is there anything else? I guess we discussed both, one and two. Yeah, but so the second one is, goes right along with the first one. If you're going to adopt the first, uh, ordinance and, uh, not put utilities director in the list of departments, you know, you have to put utilities as a separate department. Well, then, the second ordinance should also be adopted. And all that does is repeals the section in chapter nineteen that creates the utilities department. But again, that's always subject to further decision and review. But again, uh, only pursuant to an ordinance. So it does make it a little bit less subject to continuous change. Everybody comfortable? We thought it was going to be a two-hour.
I, you know, I just didn't earn my, I was despair. I talked about this.
Mr. Thompson. So, um, Mayor, you have two hours on purpose. Do you have a priority?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Yes. One more time around the moon, or not this time, sorry, around the sun.
Do you feel comfortable with all these changes, Mr. Messi?
Yes, this reflects my best effort, Mr. Paul D'Nado. And so I, I do, uh, recommend it for what it is, which is an ordinance, subject to further consideration anytime, anything, you know, different decisions decided to come out of the city council. And it's up to council for that. But I like it in that it's not too, uh, specific. We don't get into the division level of departments. And we're just saying that that's going to be, you know, subject to, you know, every year's budget process and the org chart adoption, that would be part of that process.
You know, actually, uh, like Mr. Messi said, uh, the city manager contract and this one, I never thought it was going to pass.
The, oh, the one, that one?
No, they go, I, you know, like the city managers.
Uh-huh.
You know, that this one, especially this one, with the director. You know, I thought it was going to fizzle out to, you know, in the vast. People voted, they trust you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Messi? So if they want to appeal this ordinance, they have to go to the vote again?
No. No, no, uh, ordinance is, unless the referendums get circulated, do not go to the vote of the people. If, if, let's say tonight, if you decide to adopt this and then the vote is unanimous and what the council can do is you can wait for second reading. So you, it could possibly be finalized tonight in adoption. That's something the council can do. But it won't be effective for thirty days to allow that opportunity for a referendum. But any future amendments then to this would have the same, uh, procedural restrictions, you know. Uh, an amendment would be not effective for thirty days and subject to referendum petition, which couldn't create the vote of the people. Then unless until that happens, ordinances don't go to votes of the people. In fact, there's a case law, Mayor, that's what I'm going to, that one of the cities, or there was one, submitted their sales tax ordinance. The, the city directly, um, as if it was going to be like a charter, they, they referred it to the vote of the people. And they said, well, people, if you want to raise the sales tax, you do it as a way to avoid it.
Uh-huh.
And the court said, no, you decide that by ordinance. You don't refer ordinances yourselves to the people. You could have your ordinance referred via referendum process. But you, uh, by resolution, refer changes to a charter for non-ordinance.
They didn't want to be the, that cuts?
They didn't, for whatever reason there, you know, and the, and the court said, too bad. You know, and the, and the court said, too bad, I wouldn't make those decisions at first as in adopting an ordinance. And then if the people don't like it, then they can pass the referendum petitions and submit it to the vote of the people.
Listen, the other thing could be vote of the referee.
Well, I'm saying because, you know, if a new administration comes in, they would like to change. And.
Well, it's in the city charter. Well, the, the way that the charter is written is that the council has to give that authority. And so you have that authority. Oh, if, if that question wanted to be changed, it would have to be charter changed to go back to the people. We were committed by the council to be placed.
You have to go to.
It's on the voting.
Yeah, because that's what we did.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Do I, did I answer the question?
Yes, yes. Please do that tomorrow.
No, 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 I said, oh, let's talk about the.
It's going to really want to focus.
Yeah, better labor standards.
Are we done, guys? Is it okay?
Yes.
Yes, we're good.
I'm motion to adjourn.
So.
One second. All right, Mr. Max.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is the cake ready?